Please rise to the Pledge of the Liam.
Okay. It's okay. She was this. I don't know. Yeah. 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 Sure. January two thousand. Please rise to the Pledge of the Liam.
I am the Regent of Two-Swade. I am the District Attorney. The two of you hold up for which sentence. What is it? Indiscernible. Those are the two justices. Yeah. 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 Okay. Good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacuola.
Here.
Director of Law Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Bicker. Councilman-at-Large Kranek.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Trevis.
Here.
Board One, Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board Two, Councilman Frondor.
Here.
Board Three, Councilman Cucro.
Here.
Board Four, Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties, Labiche.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Okay. Before we begin, Councilman Bicker is at home ill. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to excuse his absence.
I'll second.
Who did that? Somebody second that again.
Frank did.
Frank did. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Okay. Councilman Bicker has been excused. We do not have a... Reading and disposal of the journal tonight. The next meeting minutes will be prepared for our meeting in two weeks. So we'll begin with the consent agenda dated January ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
There's no division of the question. I move that we accept the consent agenda dated January ninth, two thousand seventeen.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Consent agenda dated January ninth, two thousand seventeen, has been accepted. Are there any resolutions of commendation?
There are none.
Moving on to reports of committees. The Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on December nine... Twenty-six... I'm sorry. December nineteenth. Those meeting minutes are forthcoming. And our next meeting will be held on January seventeenth. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, we met on January third, and the minutes are on file with the clerk. And we also had a special meeting tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker will give his report at the next meeting. Police and Safety, Councilman Kranek.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Police and Safety Committees' minutes will be filed with the clerk. The next meeting is on Tuesday, January seventeenth.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Cucro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The meeting minutes are forthcoming from our last meeting. We do have a meeting on January seventeenth, but that is going to be a very brief meeting because the next night, on January eighteenth, on Wednesday at six-thirty, in this room, we're going to have a special Parks meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was January third. Those minutes are on file with the council clerk. Our next meeting will be February sixth.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frondor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was held on January third. Our next meeting will be held on January seventeenth, and the minutes are up to date and on file with the council clerk.
Thank you. Are there any appointments and confirmations? No, there are none. Thank you. Any communications, petitions, and claims?
There are none.
Council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding anything on our agenda this evening, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is there anybody in the first row? Second row? Third, fourth, fifth row? Nobody. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number one forty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move to read Ordinance Number one forty-one, two thousand sixteen, by title only.
I'll second that. For its first and final reading.
That's good, too.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
No. Oh, yes, for the reading.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number one forty-three, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Cucro, and Petro, in Ordinance Two-Man, Section one twenty-one point zero one-one, Compensation of Council Persons, as contained in Chapter one twenty-one, Council of Title III, Legislative of Part One Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number one forty-three, two thousand sixteen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we defeat Ordinance Number one forty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Please move to pass Ordinance Number one forty-three.
I move to pass then.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
No, no.
Frondor.
No.
Kranek.
No.
Cucro.
No.
Petro.
No.
Trevis.
No. Ordinance number one forty-three, two thousand sixteen, has been defeated. Moving on to amended ordinance number one forty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that Council tables Ordinance one forty-four, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? The reason this ordinance is being tabled is because there's been discussion about how to pay for it. Originally, we had planned on appropriating money from the Broadview Road TIF fund as opposed to spending it out of our general fund. Unfortunately, we just found out that money was transferred to pay down the existing note, and there is only a balance in the TIF fund of forty-one dollars, forty dollars. So at this time, we're not going to act on the purchase of the sign for the Civic Drive Broadview Road intersection. And I just want to mention that in two thousand thirteen, the receipts for that fund were a little bit over ninety thousand dollars, expenses of a hundred and twenty, leaving us a balance of fifty-two thousand. In two thousand fourteen, we had, obviously, the beginning balance of fifty-two thousand with receipts of ninety-three thousand, expenses of a hundred and seven thousand, leaving an end in balance in two thousand seventeen of about thirty-eight thousand. And then in two thousand sixteen, the money we collected, our receipts, went down to fifty-four thousand dollars, and our expenses remained about the same of ninety-two thousand, which is why we have a... basically, a zero balance. And we asked the mayor to ask the finance department why our collections went down for this fund. Granted, these numbers for two thousand sixteen were through the end of November. It's possible that there'll be some collections for the month of December, but I believe that's unlikely because in previous years, we didn't collect anything in December. So until we get a handle on what's going on with that, we're going to table this ordinance and just move on. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Amended ordinance number one forty-four, two thousand sixteen, has been tabled. Moving on to ordinance number one, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cucro.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read Ordinance Number one, two thousand seventeen, for its first and final reading, declaring an emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number one, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Council Persons, Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Cucro, and Petro, in Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Enter into a Memorandum of Understanding on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Ciggo Soil and Water Conservation District and the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, for the purpose of working with the City of Seven Hills for effective collaboration for providing technical assistance in implementing soil and water conservation measures, and that the City of Seven Hills agrees to grant an annual conservation appropriation to the SWCD not to exceed fifty-five hundred dollars for a twelve-month period for said service. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, regional storm manager... Stormwater management will reimburse the City of Seven Hills for the fifty-five hundred dollars through Title Five of the N O R S D, Regional Stormwater Management Code, Section seventy-nine, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number one, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cucro.
I move that we pass Ordinance Number one, two thousand seventeen.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number one, two thousand sixteen, has passed. Moving on to ordinance number two, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that Council suspends the rules under the Charter and reads Ordinance Number two, two thousand seventeen, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second it, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Ordinance number two, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Cucro, and Petro, in Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for professional engineering services provided for plan reviews and inspections for the year two thousand seventeen, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number two, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that Council passes ordinance two, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second it, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd just like to indicate to the audience that this is a pass-through. This thirty thousand dollars is not a direct expense to the city.
Thank you, Councilman. I do have a comment about Bowen and Associates. Earlier this year, one of the first priorities this council had was changing the direction of our engineering department. And last year... Got to get used to this being a new year already, in two thousand sixteen. And we brought aboard Dan Collins and Mark Schmitzer from Bowen. And I got to tell you, you, the residents, how pleased I am with the work that this firm and Dan and Mark have been doing for our city. It's been a pleasure working with them, and I'm looking forward to what is coming. We're certainly going to be putting you to work this year with a lot of different projects, as you're aware. And it's very exciting to announce something that we learned in caucus today due to Dan's work, which I hope he'll talk about a little bit during his miscellaneous tonight. We, the City of Seven Hills, received a grant of one million ninety thousand dollars for the Hemlock Creek Project, which will lower the assessment for three hundred and five homeowners by approximately thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars on a project that's going to cost in excess of twenty thousand dollars a house. That's substantial. And we obtained this because of the work of Dan and Mark, and we thank you very much for doing that for us. And please... And if you would, during your miscellaneous, expand on that a little bit. I'd appreciate it. Anything further? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Ordinance number two, two thousand seventeen, has passed. Moving on to the... Moving on to Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen. Go on, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I would like to make a motion to amend the exhibit. Page two was omitted in the exhibit that is attached to Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen, so I would like to amend it to include page two.
Councilman Cucro.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Cucro.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes. Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen, has been amended, and we will now have the first reading of amended Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen.
Amended Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Council Persons, Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Cucro, and Petro, a resolution authorizing the city to accept the findings of the Ohio Ethics Commission Inquiry Number fifteen, Q-oh nine-two-five-dish-zero-four-four, dated November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, in the matter of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner, and furthermore, authorizing the city to accept the resolution of the Ohio Ethics Commission and payment of twenty-one-hundred-twelve dollars and fifty cents in restitution to the city paid by former Councilwoman Carol Lechner for her participation in increasing the salary and/or salary range of Seven Hills Fire Prevention Officer Joe Lechner, husband of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner.
Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its first reading. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments regarding anything, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Anybody in the first row? Mr. Ryman.
Jerry Ryman, one zero four four, Joy Hall. With regard to Resolution Number One, two thousand seventeen, the number stated here, twenty-one-hundred-twelve dollars and fifty cents, I'm hearing comments that that number is incorrect. Is it incorrect or correct as stated? Do you take that?
Sure. That number is incorrect.
Would you be kind enough to give us the correct number?
There's an additional two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents that the Ethics Commission apparently was not aware of. And there's a reason for that. The legislation was voted on in May of two thousand fifteen, but the pay was retroactive until January. And then the cutoff date was March ninth of two thousand sixteen. And if you do the math, the twenty-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents, they missed one month and nine days.
Okay. So is there an additional two hundred and nine dollars coming to the city?
Yeah, there is.
Okay. So it's going to be twenty-two and change, twenty-two, twenty-one?
Well, no, Jerry, the purpose of this resolution is to put this behind us. You know, we've had... And this is my opinion, and I'm not trying to speak for the rest of council, but this city has had its share of controversy and unwanted publicity, unnecessary and unwanted publicity. And I think it's in the best interest of our residents to... You know, we'll just accept the findings and go forward. Put this behind us. We don't need this any longer. There's a new council. There's a new way of doing business here in the city. And quite frankly, I personally would just, you know, I'd just as soon put this behind us. For two hundred dollars, I'd put it behind us.
Let me tell you, a number of residents don't feel that same way. A number of us do not feel that same way. You have been extremely diligent, all of you, with regard to cost savings that you have found through your hard work, through your long hours, through your budget reviews, and you've been looking for nickels and dimes for months and weeks. Now you sit before me, or us, and you're saying, hey, it's only two hundred dollars, so what? As a matter of principle, I firmly disagree with the approach you're taking. What I suggest that you do is rethink this issue. If she owes twelve dollars more, go get it. It's our money. We're not going to waste it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryman. I just want to mention that if we do... If we were to collect it, and I'm going to speak to Mr. Jarris about this, too, because I know he's asked questions. You know, if we instruct a law director or somebody to do it, it very well may cost the city more than two hundred dollars to attempt to collect it. So that's something else we're taking into consideration. So come on up again.
Do the study. Do the study. Someone will.
I understand that, but... Okay. Thank you. Yes. Anybody else in the first row?
Thanks, Jerry. The same two hundred bucks he's talking about, he just said it's our money, not yours. Bare minimum, you send a letter and say, gee, the computation was messed up. We want another two hundred and some bucks. And that can't cost a whole lot of money, even if Mr. Pignatello writes it. Pretty cheap? Okay. This whole fiasco, this is pretty much unbelievable. A number of us sat in the caucus meeting that preceded the vote that illegally gave a raise to a fireman who was the husband of a councilwoman. A number of us sat there. We watched Mr. Pignatello tell Councilman Lesnar, not good, don't do this, stay out of it. There's going to be a problem with the Ethics Commission. Came in here, she voted for it. The video's on YouTube. Seven Hills Council Watch, you got to go back some, but it's on there. There were two fire issues that day. Both of them are in the videos. But we, in the audience, the owners of the two hundred dollars, were pretty amazed that this happened at all, because we saw her warn. Mr. Pignatello did his job. And then it got even worse, because then after the ordinance passes, so thanks to the courtesy of Mr. Bridea, the famous Mike Barth, who everybody gave a nice send-off to, said great service, and Tom Snitzke. So those three voted in favor of it. And without them, she couldn't have done it. So Mr. Pignatello, when this came up last week, he said, well, the other guys weren't involved in an ethics problem. And it might not have been an ethics issue for them to support something that you had told them would be illegal, but they supported something that you had told them would be illegal. And as far as I'm concerned, then the oath of everybody up here comes into play. You're going to abide by the laws, Seven Hills, state, everybody. So they willingly supported something that you told them would be illegal. And that's going to be a feasance.
That's not accurate.
It's not? Well, that seems like that's what we heard of.
There's nothing about giving Joe Lechner a raise that's illegal. It's Carol should not have participated.
But they supported Carol's act that was an ethics violation.
How do they do that?
Pardon me?
How do they support Carol?
They voted for the same thing she voted for.
They're allowed to vote there. They've been put in the office by the voters, and they're supposed to vote on everything that comes in front of them. That's even in the Charter.
And they're supposed to have knowledge of what's basically legal and not illegal.
They knew who the players were. It's, everybody else could have voted to give Joe a raise. He's an exceptional fireman. And it's up to everybody to cast their own vote. If you have a conflict of interest, you just shouldn't participate, but...
But her having a conflict of interest dirty the process, right? That's a legal term, dirty. Raised question as to whether or not it was the right thing to do?
I think the document speaks for itself.
Okay. Well, I think it was the wrong thing to do. I think the residents' trust was violated by this whole thing. I think it was violated by the support of those people that voted for it, knowing that there was a problem with it. Just knowing that there was a problem with the ordinance. They had no business voting for it. My opinion. Just somebody sitting in the cheap seats. And then it goes to the mayor. And the mayor, who is well aware of his veto power, as we've seen lately, the mayor signed off on it because he didn't have a problem with what he saw. So nobody had a problem with what they saw, except us, the dummies in the caucus room. We had a problem. And a law was broken. The money was paid as restitution. If she had gone to Walmart and shoplifted and got caught, the sign says, "We prosecute shoplifters." But here, we're not only not going to, I haven't heard any mention of prosecution, but we're going to let her keep a couple hundred bucks. Says, what the hell? It's only a couple hundred bucks. This is wrong at so many levels that I can't begin to describe how wrong it is. We need to go after that money and collect it. The letter will probably be cheap. We need to try that and then see where it goes from there. But everybody involved in this needs to be prosecuted for what they did. Serve notice that if somebody comes to Seven Hills and wants to get on council, get involved in government, and steal from the taxpayers, they're going to get caught. And they're going to get fried. And that's what they deserve. This is like a tiny little Jimmy DeMora kind of thing that we're going to just shove away because we've had so much bad press. Well, the hell with the bad press. We've had so much, this isn't going to, this is a grand gesture. It's not going to make it disappear. You guys aren't going to look any better. They're still going to talk about you like dogs anytime you got a problem with you and the mayor. So come on, what are you fixing? Fix us. You represent us, not your money, our money. Collect our money. And then go after the people that stole our money. They have to give it back. This is wrong. This is disappointing. Mayor, I supported you when you've been right. This was wrong. I'm sorry. It's just the way I see, this is my opinion and many others. This is not good. Serve notice. Don't come to Seven Hills to screw with the taxpayers because we're watching you. That's good. That'll be a first. That'll be a first. Because everybody thinks the opposite. You're just a bunch of sleazy politicians going to do whatever works for you. Show them you're not those politicians. A lot of us here will thank you.
You know, Tom, I probably agree with about 75 to 80% of everything that you said. But, you know, there comes a time, you know, and it's still happening. It truly is still happening. There's, you know, there are people that like what this council is doing, and there are people that absolutely hate what this council is doing. And I don't, and sometimes I think it's not so much what the council's doing, but the people who are behind it. And I think that the city, again, I will say this. I believe the city has had its unfair share of negative publicity, and it's been dragged through the mud. And I think there's time, it's time for a healing process to begin. And, you know, $200, I'm half tempted to tell all of you right now. I'll write a check for $209.66 just for this thing to go away. It just needs to go away. You know, this is the, this is the, this is the last echoes. This is the remnants of 12 years of people management, fiscal management of this city. And, you know, it's got to end at some point. You know, it just has to end. And so this is, you know, this is my attempt that, let's just go on, let's just move forward. 2017 is going to be a great year for this city. Who cares about former councilwoman?
Holding accountable? Pardon? Is that the last thing you said?
I said, who cares? When 2017 is over, who cares? I certainly, quite honestly, I don't care at this point. I just want this to go away. It just needs to go away.
Most all of the political gyrations in Seven Hills are, who cares? How many people remember Ben Kowski wrote a book describing the size of his mail? Remember?
What I, I didn't say that people didn't care. It's, you know, the general feeling out there is going to be, who cares? We got all this other stuff going on, all this good stuff happening in the city.
Well, maybe next week that's true, but this week we're pissed.
Anything else, Tom?
Thanks.
No, thank you, thanks, Tom.
Anybody else in the first row? Second row?
Hello. Kathy Falle, 1,000 media. Media tracking. No. I want to know what the problem is that Lechner got to vote on it. Aren't there checks and balances? If she was told, no, you probably shouldn't do it, then who let her do it?
All I can tell you is that there was an ordinance on the table to increase the pay range of the fire prevention officer, and I believe the fire chief was on there as well. The vote was, it was going to be 3-3. She was the deciding vote. Myself, Councilman Frandorf, and then councilwoman Ernst voted no. Why she voted for it, I can't tell you. I don't know.
Shouldn't somebody have told her, you probably shouldn't? This is going to look really bad for you? This is going to look bad for the rest of us?
Go on, Tom.
Our law director did counsel her.
You don't have enough power to tell her? You cannot do this? Someone needs to step up and do that then so this doesn't happen again.
Well, that's why there's a, obviously, an Ethics Commission.
But look how long before anything comes of it. And now, when something does come of it, we just want to sweep it under the rug.
No, we're trying, I'm trying to, personally, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. And the reason that we're having this resolution is because somewhere down the road, someone's going to say, is that, does that $2,112.50, is that everything that was owed? And then, if the answer was no, then it would be, well, why didn't you guys do your due diligence? Well, quite frankly, we did do our due diligence and said, it's $209.66. And again, I can't speak for council. We have to vote on this, you know, on the third reading. And I'm not going to try to persuade, you know, them to, you know, vote one way or the other. My personal feeling is, I just want this to, let's just, you know, by the time this is voted on, it's going to be February. Let's, we've got, if you're in the caucus, we have a lot of things on the plate, you know, road programs and crack ceiling programs and, you know, park programs that, you know, I don't want to waste any more of my time or another calorie of energy, you know, on this for something that, you know, we just need to put behind us. This, everything's changed here. This council is moving the city forward. We've done, thank you, Tom, for acknowledging we've done some good things. And Jerry, for acknowledging that we've done some good things. You know, fine, you know, let us stand on our record. You know, there's a time and a place where you just have to say, enough is enough. And that's the point I've reached.
Then you should all stand together and divide that balance between all of you. Not one person should have to pay.
Kathy, I am willing, I'm willing to cut a check tomorrow.
But it shouldn't be just you doing it, that. It should be everybody else that knew.
That knew? We voted against it.
Yeah, I voted against it. I was one of the no votes.
That wasn't what I meant to say.
I know what you're saying.
All right, thank you.
Anybody further?
Sure.
Just a minute.
If we said no, what would you do?
I'd have came up anyhow. And then you have to call a cop. I start calling you, Michelle. That's the other part of this thing that's really intriguing. How do we find out about this? Since this is a, I'm not used to the dialogue part at this point. We found out about this.
Okay, you weren't, all right.
Because you went and asked a specific question.
Let the councilman explain.
Here's what happened. We're going to be going through budget hearings, okay? And I wanted to make sure that I understood, you know, the budget. Everything, you know, I don't want to say that I'm obsessive about it, but I'm obsessive about it. And, and one of the things that, one of the categories that we have is miscellaneous revenue. And there's a dollar figure, you know, associated with miscellaneous revenue. So I asked our deputy finance director, I want to understand what this is. Please provide me with 2014, 15, and 16 records on, you know, this miscellaneous revenue so I could try to understand what it's all, if there's a rhyme or reason to it where we could say, like the old, what do you call it? The, when someone passes away. No, no. No, 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 when, when...
They're dead.
We would get a portion of the estate back, the estate tax. We would get a portion back. And we used to estimate, you know, like $200,000 every year because sometimes it was way in excess and sometimes it was a lot lower. So I thought, well, you know, maybe we, you know, we start estimating, you know, that fund. In the course of the, my looking at it, in 2016, there were some large numbers. There were a couple of $2,500. There were a couple, there was a $5,500. And there was this $2,112.50 payment from Fifth Third Bank. So I went through a number, I learned a number of things. One of them I learned is that there was a $1,600 payment from the county. Well, guess what? We mow county property, and then we send them an invoice, and then they pay us. And there were a couple of those. There were a bunch of them from the rec center that were from $120 down to $40. Well, those were from the farmer's market. So I'm learning things. There were two $2,500 ones, and that was the $5,000 that we loaned the Hall of Fame Committee three years ago? Two years ago? Couple of years ago? And they paid it back. They paid $2,500 in the beginning of the year and then $2,500 late in the year. There was a $5,500 payment. And it was part of the loan that we gave to the building owner on Rockside Road. That was the first payment. So, you know, I went, Joe Hotchkiss, myself, and Charmaine went through the records. We pulled out the boxes and we looked at, you know, what are the, you know, what are these? What are these things? And here's what we found out. That check was for Carol Lechner. So the first thing I did is I went down to the law department and talked to our clerk down there and said, do you know anything about $2,100? Yes, we got a letter from the Ohio Ethics Commission. And that's how it was discovered.
So there was a journal entry that it came from whatever bank?
Fifth Third Bank, correct. Whatever, Fifth Third, one of the two, yeah.
But you looked at the check that you found, and it had a memo or something?
Yeah, and, yes.
Today, I sent an email to Joe Hotchkiss. I understand Joe is out today. And Joe's always really quick about coming back because I questioned if it was common practice for the City of Seven Hills Finance Department to record a payment with the person, the lending institution that makes the check, rather than the person sending the money.
Well, believe me, Tom, you know, I'm trying to do our due diligence here. I had a conversation with our law director, and he said, you know, let's talk to Joe Hotchkiss. There may be something that the state auditors require. It turns out that they don't, you know. So, you know, I'm just trying to do the right thing here. Plain and simple.
I mean, it looks like the money came in, but it was, some attempt was made to not show exactly where the money came from.
Well, I can't, you know, I'm not even, I'm not even going to go there. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that's why I asked Hotchkiss the question. I asked if that's common practice in the City of Seven Hills. Because I'm not an accountant, but I've dealt with plenty of accounts through the years.
Yeah.
And Joe's a really deliberate guy and a good guy. I can't see Joe taking it on himself to record this by name of the lending institution.
Well, it would be, well, you know, a lot of things could have happened. That's the accounts receivable. And, you know, the clerk saw Fifth Third Federal on there, and that's how it was recorded. I mean, it can be something as simple as that. I don't know. Frankly, I don't care. At this point, I don't care about that. I'm happy that, you know, it was discovered insofar as, you know, you want to talk about being a watchdog. And I've said this, you know, a number of times. There's going to be, there's going to be a point where I will not be on this council. But as long as I'm drawing a breath, I'll be a watchdog. And, you know, it's just, you know, it's this kind of learning experience that's going to help the city down the road. And we need more people like you, you know, that are watchdogs out there. And this is how, this is how you keep people honest.
Well, I've been at your budget meetings, so I know how anal you are about stuff. That's a good thing. It's a good place, good time. Obviously, the previous council majority wasn't. And the mayor, do you have any idea why the entry looked like that? Finance, or that's Joe's deal, probably not? Okay, we'll see what Joe says. This is going for two more readings. I'll let you know what Joe tells me, and we can share it. Thanks.
Tom, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kranek.
You know, voting on this, all these other things that are being brought in, what I voted on as a councilman was a resolution authorizing the city to accept the findings of the Ohio Ethics Commission. That's what I'm voting on.
Right, I get it. I understand the purpose.
That includes a lot of things that are in here, you know, which I would assume is public record if somebody wanted to check them. But, but a lot of what, without going into everything, I mean, there are still options open. Ohio Ethics Commission has filed this thing, and they said, here's our findings. We're accepting that along with all the options that they left open. For example, per the settlement agreement, okay, let's see. She accepts public reprimand, pay a fine, does not waive her rights to future opening of this up again. So this is, I'm going by what the Ethics Commission without reading through everything in here. And it's pretty encompassing.
I read two to three pages. I never got the third page. I requested a document from Mr. Pignatello's office.
But that's basically what I, as a councilman, a voter. All the other things, what happened, the where with the, and I, I'm voting that I approve of what the Ohio Ethics Commission says.
Right, so the possibility that there could be further action or whatever is left open according to that.
Wherefore, and, you know.
Right.
Basically, it says, this is not, something comes up, this doesn't say that you, it can't be reopened, can't be prosecuted. If new things come up, by the acceptance I see that she had with them, they've left all kinds of things open. If something further shows up, something, you know, God knows. We don't anticipate it. But they're pretty encompassing.
Well, just following through with the criminal aspect of this. This is supposed to qualify her for a fourth demeanor or a fourth degree misdemeanor or something.
Felony. It's a felony.
Felony? Better. Better, let's get that one. We'll chip in for the legal money.
And I, Tom, you've got that in front of me. And I just read through it really quickly, and I'm not a lawyer. But it says something to the effect of that the Ethics Commission has, is given authority to come up with a settlement agreement. Meaning that, you know, they can, they can, they can do that or not do that. They can send it to the Kuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office or not. And this is what they've chosen to do.
Now, it does say, a copy of this settlement agreement will share with the officer of the Kuyahoga County Prosecutor. The City of Seven Hills Law Director. The agreement is a public record. Carol acknowledges that any future allegations, violations brought to the commission or prosecutor's office will be fully investigated if warranted by the facts recommended to be prosecuted to the full extent of all. That's pretty encompassing. That's what I voted on.
Mr. Pignatello, does this mean that any kind of procedure to make her criminally answerable for this, is that gone? That ship sailed?
Yeah.
The Ethics Commission said goodbye?
Well, they forwarded it, I believe, to the prosecutor's office to participate in this matter.
this matter, is the way I understand it. But I'm not certain on that.
So we caught the kid shoplifting, we got the stuff he took, and we cut him loose and said, the hell with prosecuting, like our sign says.
That's what the Ethics Commission, they had the option. As I understand it, they had the option of sending it to the County Prosecutor's Office. Matter of fact, Bill Mason was, was in, in the room when, you know, when I was talking about this and, and I, and I said that. I go, they had the option and he, you know, to send it to the prosecutor's office? And he said, yeah, they, they had that option. They chose not to do that, apparently. I, you know, I don't know. Again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not intimate with what the Ethics Commission can or can't do. I can only go by what I, what I see. I don't know, Tom.
Well, that's just Danny.
That I don't know.
That's just Danny. Major miscarriage of justice as far as we're concerned. But now they decided it's okay because they got 20 some hundred bucks. And we're sort of allergic to try to collect the other 200.
I would, I would say that's what they came up with and I know how they came up with it.
Yeah, I can see the computation deal. But, okay, it's going to go with two more readings and see what other comments we come up with by then. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Anybody further? Last call. Okay. Reports and communications from the mayor and safety director. Mayor Delacqua.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I, I want to add on to some of the comments you had about the work of the city engineer in obtaining this additional grant money for the Hemlock Creek project. I want to reiterate what you said. The city engineer has done a stellar job for us since coming on board and this is just another example of that in obtaining this additional grant money for that project. Seven Hills, as everybody knows, is under an EPA mandate to convert all our septic systems to sanitary systems by a date certain. The Hemlock Creek project is the largest remaining portion of that work, which as I think you correctly stated includes about 300, excuse me, 305 homes. Total cost is about $8.5 million, give or take. We previously obtained an Ohio Public Works Committee grant of 2.4 million to offset some of that expense. And with the additional work now that our engineer has done for us, the additional award brings the total grants package to just under $3.5 million. That's great news for our residents since the cost of this project is going to be assessed, for the most part, with the exception of things like the 2% for intersections, et cetera. These grants will substantially reduce the overall cost for our residents to somewhere in the area of $5 million, spread out over that 305 homes. As you mentioned in the meeting, the work is scheduled to commence sometime late 2017. Remaining now is to obtain whatever other easements are required for the project, go to bid. And obviously, there will be the sewer equalization process going forward. But just want to say, what a great job our engineer has done for us and really appreciate the work. It really takes a load off of, off of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from the directors of departments and other officials. Director of Public Properties and Service, Stuart Levine.
Yes, I want to congratulate Engineer Collins too for obtaining a very sizable grant for Hemlock Creek Sanitary Sewer Project.
Thank you, Stuart. Director of Law, Richard Pignatello.
Hi, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, and we, oh, Engineer Dan Collins. See, we haven't gotten your nameplate yet and I missed you.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. President.
We ordered it though.
Yeah. I'll just elaborate just a little bit further on this grant, successful grant award that we received, you know, were noted on Friday. This was a program that the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District just started this year. They actually announced it on September 16th of 2016 and they gave us a little more than a month to get our applications together. And there was a process involved where we had a pre-proposal meeting, we had to sit down with them and go over some of our candidate projects. And then the applications were due no later than October 31st. So with that said, we moved forward and we knew that this Hemlock project was a, a poster child project for this type of opportunity that the Sewer District was offering. And so October 29th, we submitted our application and we applied for $1.25 million. Now, just wanted to let you know that it was only, there was only $5 million available to 61 communities in Cogga County. From my understanding, a little over 20 communities applied for it and only 12 communities received successful grant awards. And the City of Seven Hills was, was ranked one. We, we received the most money at $1.09 million. That's $1,090,000, just above the City of Cleveland that received $1,040,000 for their project. So again, there were 12 projects successful and seven, City of Seven Hills received the, the most, the highest awarded amount. So we're pleased that worked for the city and we were glad in obtaining this, this grant for the, the City of Seven Hills and its residents. And it's going to save the, it's going to bring down the assessment cost a decent amount. This, this grant's about 13% of the total cost of construction, the total amount. So we feel that's a, kind of like a last minute grant that we, we, we got for the, the City of Seven Hills for this project. And we're appreciative and thankful for it. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Great job again.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to council miscellaneous. Let's start with Councilman Biaseada tonight.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Kranek.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Kukrow.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned briefly earlier, we are having a special parks meeting in this room a week from Wednesday, 6:30 to talk about what we're going to do to spend some of that money we have this year to fix up the parks. If you would like to attend, please join. I'd like to have a full house. I know that there's a lot of people who are, who are interested in attending, so please come. And that's at 6:30 on January 18th. And then, you know, again, I, the Hemlock Creek project is in my ward. All 305 homes are in my ward. I hear a lot about it. And I'm on the front lines with this. And when we, I'll echo what Council President Treifus said. When we moved to bring in a new engineering firm in 2016, this is exactly the, the reason we did such a thing. Dan and Mark and their firm have really stepped up and, you know, I like to call employees like these rock stars. They come in and they just take care of everything you want them to take care of without you having to, you know, really be all over them about it. And that's what he did in this case. And I owe you a present, Dan, because the, the 305 homeowners in this project are definitely going to be happy when they hear this news that they're going to be saving almost $3,500 each, which is a lot of money. So thank you and I look forward to more work from the engineering department in the future. Things are really looking up in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kukrow. Councilman Petro.
Just congratulations to Dan and his firm. You know, I, I've been involved in a lot of projects over the years and this one, this, this is pretty big. This is huge that I've seen in my 20 some years being here. So again, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Frondor.
I'd like to congratulate Dan as well. I, I'll say this. Dan, did you say that this became available in mid-December?
September.
September, okay. So September and here it is January and we were, we were granted that money. I will, I'm, I'm going to talk about Councilman Kukrow just, just for a moment. I know that there have been residents that are, that have said, you know, get as much grant money as you can. And I, you know, it's like, there's only so much grant money out there. But Dan, thank you for, you know, finding that, recognizing that, submitting it and capturing it. I mean, that's, that's tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a few things tonight. The first thing is actually pretty exciting news. For the past year, many of our residents are aware of the potential Rockside Road development. We have two groups that are in the process of beginning their development. And today, as a matter of fact, LSB Seven Hills, the owner of the larger parcel, which will be a mixed use development, began demolition of houses. There are two, from what I know, two houses on Rockside were torn down today and another nine houses, I believe, on Rockside and Crossview will be down in the next week or two. This is finally some tangible results to this project. And we're going to be moving forward quickly with some other things. And if all goes well, I believe both groups will be able to break ground in spring. So that's very exciting news for the city. Second thing I want to talk about is also pretty good news. And that is about the upcoming rubbish levy. We have an existing levy that is set to expire soon. And last week or week before, I put a proposal out to council and the administration regarding the millage. The current millage is 3.8 mils. And for, for a number of different reasons, we are generating more money than we need. I believe that back when this current levy was placed on the ballot, we were asking for too much from our residents. I voted no on it. Well, now, it's been proven that we didn't need as high of a millage as we asked for. So I am asking council and the administration to support a tax decrease for our residents from 3.8 mils to 2.9 mils. What that means to our residents is you, if it passes, you would receive a decrease in your, your property tax equating to $34 a year based on $100,000 home valuation. It's not a lot, but it's certainly something. We, we thought we might be able to put it on the upcoming May primary ballot. Our outside legal counsel confirmed that we need to put it on the November ballot. So doesn't really change anything other than when our residents will be able to vote on it. And it's going to happen this year, hopefully. So stay tuned on that later in the year. Third thing, there's been a lot of questions of members of council regarding the Glenn's Landing pre-application approval, along with questions of access. And I'm going to speak on behalf of the entire city council. We are all in agreement of this. Our law director advised us not to discuss anything regarding this until we are legally allowed to. We're united in this and it is certainly in the best interest of the city that we maintain the position we're taking and not discussing anything that is talked about in executive session. Lastly, I have a zoning board appeals motion. As we talked about in caucus, there was a zoning board meeting on January 4th. Only one variance request was in front of the board. I'm going to make a motion to approve a variance for Dave and Don Tonesing of 3320 Forest Overlook Drive, a variance to ordinance number 1106.02C driveway construction to allow the construction of a driveway pad extension to be three feet off the side yard lot line. I'll second that. Sorry, discussion?
I just remember I spoke to these, these people. They were in my ward and they had some problems getting the thing done in time through the building department and because of an error or whatever. So I'm glad that it went through and, and passed through. I'm happy for them.
Thank you for reminding us about that. In some emails that I was copying on, I saw that the resident did not receive returned phone calls from the building department and actually, which actually forced them to push this variance request to a later meeting. And now because of weather, they can't do this construction until later in the year. And the variance is good for up to one year. So that was unfortunate, but we're doing our part. Any further comment? Please call the roll.
Biaseada?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treifus?
Yes. Variance has passed. And let me go through my notes real quick. I think that's it. I will make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Biaseada?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treifus?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.
I don't even hear any, I'm getting help to segment it, so I don't know. I'm so far behind on them. That's scary. You know, you had records, again, a record-setting legislative year.
Was it?
Oh, my gosh. By a lot.
I thought so. Yeah, no, it is. They have been already. The president was involved. He said it now. He's there.[1628.13]